Good evening to each and every one of you all. We'll call our meetings, our workshop tour. To order at this present time, I want to thank each and every one of you for being here tonight. Thank our president for being here tonight. Thank staff for being here. And thank Ms. Bryant from Senator Abramovich for being here too well. Commission, I thank you all and hope that you will have a wonderful and a great Thanksgiving, you and your family. And I want to thank those that's on live feed welcoming you to our meeting tonight. At this present time, we have a roll called by Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins, call the roll, please.
I meant Ms. Rouse.
So we have Commissioner Barbara King, Commissioner Albert L. Pope. We have Commissioner Barbara, Barbara King.
Present.
We have Commissioner Albert, Albert L. Pope.
Present.
We have Commissioner Esther Berry.
Present.
We have Vice Mayor Taranza McKelvin.
Present, you got it right.
We have Mayor Joe Kyle.
Present. Thank you, Mr. President. We do appreciate you calling the roll tonight. She's one of our students from the pre-law program and she have a few words to say to us tonight. We have a grandmother here with her tonight and Commissioner, we just want to thank you all for being here. At this time, at this present time, we have discussion of the agenda item for tonight. And reference to one called the order, a roll called, uh, prayer by Commissioner Pope. Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to close our voting conflict, presentation, proclamation, we have three presidents tonight. Respey Incorporated Greg Park, Senior Vice President. Genopius Smart Mobility Solution Incorporated, Hussain Dolbija, Business Development Manager. And Blue Line Solutions LLC, Sharonda Wright, Business Representative. Opportunity for the public to address the commissioners' concern agenda. And reference to concern agenda, regular city workshop approval city minutes, October the 15th, 2024. November the 19th, 2024, November the 26th, 2024. Meetings, minutes, October the 15th, minutes, October the 19th, and minutes, October the 26th. Uh, Mr. Manager, you have an deletion to this agenda for tonight?
The only deletion is in the presentation, Blue Line Solutions LLC will not be present tonight.
All right, thank you.
No other, no other additions.
Thank you, sir. I do appreciate. Any question from this commission's, uh, for the concern agenda tonight?
No question, but just an observation. My laptop is in BitLocker. So I'm requesting a printed copy of the agenda, just for the public to know, okay?
It is printing, Commissioner.
It's printing? Thank you so much. And I will check with IT to determine what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, we're moving on to our resolution, Resolution 50 dash 2024. Mr. Collins, read for the record, please.
The city, the deputy clerk stepped out. Resolution 50 dash 2024. A resolution of the City Commission of City of South Bay, Florida. Supporting the procurement and oversight of consultants for the development of a countywide transportation plan. Supporting the formation of a technical advisory committee for the same and providing for an effective date. The American Mission, the, I would like to share is what you received. There was one whereas, whereas clause added. The whereas clause that was added says, whereas through passage of this resolution, the City of South Bay is in no way making a financial commitment. That is the whereas clause that was added and I placed that in front of you as a printed copy. I did share that, um, additional, uh, Resolution 50 dash 2024 with the commission. Now, in light of the trans- Resolution 50 dash 2024. The Palm Beach County was tasked with developing a transportation, excuse me, procuring a transportation master plan consultant. At the time when the information was presented, uh, the county commission authorized, gave directive to the county administrator to hire a consultant. The way the information was presented to the cities at the time, including the City Managers Association, it was not in concert with all of the cities. The county administrator, after meeting with the City Managers Association, Palm Beach County City Managers Association, Palm Beach County League of Cities, it slowed down and a process was put in place to include all 39 municipalities. What you have before you is a resolution from the City of South Bay supporting this effort for a transportation for the county to procure, seek, put out an RFP for a consultant to come in and develop a transportation master plan. So that is, uh, right now, there are approximately 10 cities that have executed this resolution in support of the county hiring a consultant for a trans- to draft a transportation master plan. And South Bay's staff is recommending approval of Resolution 50 dash 2024 for South Bay to support those efforts as well.
Thank you, Senator Manager. Any question from this commission's for Resolution 50 dash 2024?
Yes, would you just tell us, oh, thank you so much. Thank you, I appreciate it. Uh, the source of the funding, please.
Yeah, that would be Palm Beach County.
Palm Beach County via.
I'm, I'm sorry. When you say via.
I'm, I'm sorry. Department of Transportation.
I'm not sure. It's Palm Beach County. It's, it's possibly their general funds. I'm not. It is Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners through whatever many or efforts they are doing. It is, I'm not sure which line item or where they're getting the funding from.
Clarity regarding these funds are not related to state allocations or distributions?
I'm unable to answer that question because they are not city funds. They're, I'm not, are we not, we did not ask Palm Beach County Administrator what pocket, where she's getting the funding from. I can say she did speak and it will be general funds.
General funds. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
If you get additional information, you let us know, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Manager, you stated it is at no cost to the citizens, am I correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. Thanks, Senator Manager. In addition, question from this commission's for Resolution 50 dash 2024. Here and none, we continue Resolution 51 dash 2024. Mr. Collins, read for the record, please.
Resolution 51 dash 2024. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida. Ratifying the City Manager's submission of the United States Environmental Protection Agency Environmental and Climate Justice Community Change Grants Program. Application, application for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025, provided for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, Senator Manager.
This American Mission, this is the, this grant was submitted through the EPA, US, United States Environmental Protection Agency Community Change Grant as part of the, uh, President Biden's administration build. Build, build back, build back better, better build back one of those, uh, directions. But it is the Community Change Grant, um, through the EPA in the amount of $16 million. This Community Change Grant would aid in supporting nonprofit, uh, working with one of the local, entities, community partnership, um, housing agency. And I think it's all in the grant. I just don't have it in front of me. The Housing Partnership, Inc. Working with them, um, career source to provide workforce. Also, uh, constructing the new, um, community center here in the City of South Bay. All of those components are added into this Community Change Grant. It would work on water quality, education, air quality, education, and empowerment with the residents. Also while serving as that emergency, um, shelter in the community. The staff is recommending approval, ratification of submission of said grant.
Thank you, Senator Manager. Any question from this commission's for Resolution 51 dash 2024 at this present time? Mr. Manager, one question. Would this grant, would they be working with, uh, Palm Beach State College and West Tech?
The Palm Beach State College is not, nor West Tech is identified in this, um, particular grant.
Yes, sir.
As they are, um, their educational, their system did not align with what was requested from EPA.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. In addition, questions for Resolution 51 dash 2024. Here and none, we'll continue. Yes. Hey, Madam, uh, Madam Attorney.
Good evening.
I just want to make sure that, um, this is the most recent update.
For Resolution 50, 2024, that is the recent update that the commission has set aside. Yes. You and I, that was just received with the, uh, additional whereas clause. Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you, uh, Madam Attorney. Thank you for being here and thank God that you made it here safe and we do appreciate that there. We'll continue with our agenda for tonight. Rose, what letter from the school report, uh, Vice Mayor.
Yes, um, Principal High Tower should be here at the seven o'clock meeting.
All right. Thank you, sir. Financial report, accounts payable and AP report, uh, financial, Mr. Master, uh, Treasurer, Commissioner Barry.
I will ask during the regular meeting that we, uh, table this until the next meeting, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Senator Cruz report.
No report.
Thank you. Senator Manager report.
Mayor, there will be a few items coming from the manager. One, in focusing on our legislative update based upon the items presented during our last meeting. I would give further information on our legislative update. This is a pre-proposal, a proposal, propose, a draft language for those items. Also. Also for the MLK event that's, um, being proposed in January. There will be a request, um, seeking the funding amount, looking for the line item. So I'm able to present it to the commission for approximately $3,000. That's within the manager's purview. I do wanted to share that information, uh, with the commission for the MLK event that would take place in January. There may be, uh, you would see possible total not exceeding $3,000, um, for the MLK event in January. And the last item that the manager would further discuss is an economic development opportunity that was presented to the manager. Friday, I received an email for a developer is interested in approximately 4.2 or 4.5 acres of land to be donated. I have not read or dissected the entire proposal, but I would prior to, uh, prior to our meeting in January, be able to provide more information to the commission regarding that item. But the purpose with me bringing it up tonight is to let you know that there are some interest that is still, uh, on your park of commerce, but this one comes, that interest is, I did read the word donation of land um, in the proposal, but there is interest in your park of commerce for some land to be donated. But we will get into it. We've been, I have not, this is my first time announcing it and sharing it. And of course, I have not shared it with the city attorney, uh, or with anyone at the moment. But I just wanted to let you know that there's interest in your park of commerce, uh, for some land to be donated or developed.
Would that be considered part of our, well, I'll wait till the discussion, we have the discussion. Referring back to the MLK event support, does that include, I know we have a line item for the Martin Luther King Oratorical Contest. That is not a part of the Martin Luther King Oratorical Contest. All right. Thank you. And the source of this, uh, who's asking for this?
Oh, it's within our budget and it's not a source that asking for, but they're just going to, it may be multiple, um, events or activities that we will have to pay for, uh, for the event.
In the City of South Bay or?
In the City of South, in the City of South Bay.
I would like to review this item with the, uh, I will meet with, just to review.
There is no item.
There's no item, there's no item tonight in reference to this.
I understand that, but, uh, I will, uh, just glean over this with, uh, Mrs. Sodom.
Yes, ma'am.
May I do that?
You should.
Just glean over it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So I can have all the details, uh, because we, we have a tight budget for the new year. So I just want to make sure that I am, uh, in touch. Thank you.
There are no other items from the manager, Mr. Nate.
Thank you so much.
Senator Manager, I appreciate it. Uh, Senator Turner's report.
Yes, I was there. And Commissioner Westbury, just wanted to remind you all about your ethics requirement in terms of meeting at by December 31st. And so, um, you'll have some information as to how you event trained if you haven't already done that. But you do have a certain requirement that you need to complete with the requirements. So just have in mind, ready by the beginning and have gotten, gotten the ethics training from, um, the league cities or, um, Palm Beach County, uh, Commissioner Ethics. I need to, anybody, you know, need some hours and you don't have another course or something, but I don't want to miss, don't want you all to miss the, um, opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Senator Manager, we have had the opportunity with the, uh, league to take that, the training. I do appreciate that. Our commission, make sure you don't allow December to pass by you without getting the ethics training, please. Thank you.
Where do we get the form from? City clerk?
City clerk.
Ethics?
Yes.
Ethics is, um, I think that's mailed out to you directly. But the, the city clerk would give you, the state body attorney, she, she would be able to give you some better guidance.
City manager, um, Mr. Mayor, that training app that was done on October.
Yes, and Commissioner King.
I don't have to do it, right?
The three of us were there.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner King. I do appreciate that. So it's only just, uh, the other three have to get the, the training. Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, future agenda items, here and none?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Commission, uh, coming for the good order. We will have that at seven o'clock, uh, tonight. I entertain motion to adjourn the workshop.
Adjourn.
So moved by Commissioner Barry, seconded by Vice Mayor McKelvin. Workshop is adjourned. We will reconvene at seven o'clock.
Good evening, teacher, everyone of y'all. Thank you for being here tonight and thank those on live feed. And thank you to everyone for being here and hope that you have had a Thanksgiving. Commissioner's staff, thank you for being here tonight. Vice Mayor, thank you for being here tonight. We seen each other today and thank you. Ms. Ifield, we seen you today, seeing you, and thank you for being here tonight. And tonight, we have with us the Lake Shore Pre-Law Students here with us tonight. And Ms. Rounson sets up on the DS tonight and what she will do. She will call our role tonight in reference to the commissioners here. After she called the roles and then we will have the prayer by Commissioner Polk. And after we have the pledge of allegiance of the flag. At this present time, Ms. Rounson, will you call the role for the commissioners, please?
Yes, Commissioner Barbara King.
Present.
Commissioner Albert L. Polk.
Present.
Commissioner Esther Berry.
Present.
Vice Mayor Taranda McKelvin.
Present.
Mayor Joe Coles.
President, thank you, Ms. Rounson. Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you all for being here tonight. At this present time, let us all stand, please.
Father God, we thank you tonight for who you are and for who you have been to us all year long. God, as we celebrate this season to be thankful, we are so thankful for each other. We're thankful, dear God, for the great things you have done in this great city. And as now, God, we move forward tonight with the order of business. We ask you to bless this day, continue to give us wisdom, to guide us, lead us, and teach us which way you have us to go in order to bring forth success, great success in this great community. Father, we continue to lift up the wall of DS and Peds families and the entire Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office as now they are in mourning the loss of these three great officers. We ask that you will give these families strength. Right now, they running eyes, lift up, they bow down here, take your fingers of love and mend together their broken heart.
Yes.
When it all said and done, we'll ask you to continue to bless us, bless us, bless us. And we'll thank you, thank you, thank you in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite.
Commissioner Polk, thank you for that wonderful, great prayer. Yes, it was.
Thank you.
It was a sad situation occasion today, sir, and I want to thank you for bringing those family.
I appreciate you.
At this present time, to close off voting conflict, Commissioner King.
None, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Polk?
None.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Berry?
No comment.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor McKelvin?
None, sir.
Thank you. None for me either. We'll continue with our agenda for the night. Presentation of plaque formation at this time, Mr. Mann, will you just call out the names of the one that will be with us tonight, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, as you're aware, before I bring the presenters up, the commission is set out for working on our speed zone speeding within our school zone. And we've had several conversations you have tonight with you to talk about the school safety zone. You have Redspeed, Inc., represented by Greg Parks, Patsy St. Flor, and Onika Lowery that's with you tonight. You also have Genoptic Smart Mobility Solutions, Inc., represented by Hassan Dabaji, Dabaja, the Business Development Manager. As stated during the workshop, Blue Line Solutions LLC will not be in attendance at the meeting tonight. So at this time, we could have Redspeed, Inc. come up and do their presentation to the commission.
Mr. Park, will you give your name and your company, please, sir?
I'm Luke Hyman with Redspeed. Greg Parks gonna make it tonight. I'm filling in for him. There we go. I'm Luke Hyman with Redspeed. I'm filling in for Greg Parks. Thank you for having me. This will be a quick presentation of the system and what it does for you guys. If I can figure it out. All right, so in 2018, Florida is the number one state in the country for having the most dangerous school safety zones. Out of all of our counties in Florida, 20 counties, both rural and urban, received F grades for driving behavior in those safety zones. The importance is slowing vehicles down, making sure they're going safely through the school zones, right? So if a pedestrian's hit at 20 miles an hour, their chance of being fatally struck and killed is only 10% compared to 40% at 40 miles an hour and 90% at 58 miles an hour. So ideally, we want to get them slowed down and go in the speed limit in the school zones. And this just explains the, um, those statistics. So as you know, House Bill 657 last year passed statewide. School zones have been authorized to have automated speed enforcement in them 30 minutes prior to the beginning of school or the breakfast program throughout the school day and ends 30 minutes after the end of school. These roads, or these schools can be enforced whether it's, these school zones can be enforced whether it's a charter school, private school, or public school. It's a hundred dollar fine for the violator. And there's signs going into each school zone, on each end of the school zone and side roads before they enter into the enforced area. So drivers know that it is total enforced. So in order to install these cameras, some of the streets, some of the counties, you have to have the F dot permits, county permits, city permits, that's all stuff that Redspeed will handle on your behalf. So you all won't have to do anything for those. And all the fines, all the monies received from the fines must be used for local law enforcement, public safety initiatives. So Redspeed is an industry leader in school speed zone enforcement. We handle all your UTCs up to the point where we'll process and mail them out on your behalf once they're approved by law enforcement. All the notice of violations, we review, process, and once you guys approve it, or once the law enforcement approves it, we will send that out on their behalf also. So it's totally hands-off for you all. We have an office down in South Florida here, over in the Miami area, where it's fully staffed. We have, I think, eight or nine people working over there right now. So they'll be able to respond if anything happens to a system over this way. They can get here within, you know, several hours, get it back up online, get it running again for you. We have the most relevant experience with clients in South Florida. We have approximately 15 clients down here in the South Florida area right now, ranging from very large to, you know, one or two systems. So we handle all different size municipalities. And our company is also instrumental in helping get the legislation passed up in Tallahassee. They work closely with the legislators up there to help get this system, get these systems up and legalized and out on the streets to help slow people down and keep kids safe. And we have proven, proven results. So down this way, down in South Florida here, some of our first clients were Pinecrest, South Miami, Miami Gardens, Miami-Dade County, Plantation and Aventura, and that list is growing pretty much weekly, monthly. In Georgia, we have 70% of the market share, and we've won every RFP in the state in Georgia. We're endorsed by the Florida Police Chiefs Association. They've, um, they work hand-in-hand with us. We do a lot with them. So they work with us very well. And then we're partnered with Flock. So we're the only vendor that is authorized to integrate with Flock on their systems and for the Wayne LPR system. Our cameras are LED IR illuminated, so that means there's no flashes when there's a violation, it captures a violation. There won't be a flash, it won't distract the drivers driving at night, things like that. Color video in HD, day and night. You can remove, you can remote into the cameras and they store up to 45 days of information. So if there's a crash or you're looking for, um, the police department's looking for maybe a vehicle pass through that intersection, they can go back 45 days and review that video to see, you know, get what evidence they need for that. Our systems are installed on a single pole with tamper-resistant housings. There's also the ability to livestream. You can log right into the camera and see a live feed on those cameras if you need to. And the system provides you with a traffic and speed report in real time. So you guys, the users can go into our red check system and they can run reports and it'll tell how many speeders there were, what hours of the day they were speeding at, things like that. And then we can also export the video feeds to police departments if they're using like real-time crime centers and stuff. They can have access to these cameras. We'll skip the videos because they're a little time-consuming. So the community benefits of the cameras, one is it improves safety in school zones. We will install the cameras, maintain them, and operate everything at no cost to you all, no cost to the city. We incur all the costs. The only way we get paid is once a violation is paid, we, we get money from that. So it's zero cost to municipality. It provides money to the county or to the city for public safety initiatives. You can integrate, you know, your crossing guard program, money goes to that so they can bolster your school crossing guard program, you get more people out there helping kids cross the street safely. And again, there's, there's no cost to you guys at all. Some more benefits is it's a force multiplier, right? So the cameras free of officers, you don't have to have officers sitting in schools on doing enforcement. They can be out responding to calls in other areas, making sure other people are safe. And then you're still going to have that enforcement done in that area. Officer safety. This prevents officers and, and, and the public from having to interact on busy streets. Unfortunately, like what happened in Palm Bay, sorry, in West Palm with the, um, the three motor deputies. This eliminates the need for traffic stops on busy roads. You can do the enforcement, mail in the violation, and then there's no, there's no risk of anybody getting injured for that. So also the system is, uh, again, you have the 45-day data archive that you can go back to for evidence if you need to, if the police department needs to. And the system can integrate with Flock if it's, if you all decide that's how you want to go. So out of the hundred dollar civil penalty, $60 of that money is then go back to the local municipality with public safety. $20 goes to the state general fund, $12 goes to the local school district, $3 to FDLE Training Commission, and $5 to the school crossing guard program. So for each violation, that money goes to each of those places. So Redspeed is a turnkey service. We're going to come out, we're going to do the site studies for you, the speed studies, traffic studies. We'll install the cameras, we'll handle all the permitting, installation. We process the violations for you, for the PD. We'll just send them a, basically a file. They review it, verify that everything looks appropriate, everything's correct on it. And then they hit approve. We send out the notice of violation to the violator. It's completely hands-off for you guys. We schedule, we also schedule all the court dates, all the administrative hearings, and we even mail out the UTCs certified mail to the violators. We will also do a public awareness campaign for you all. We will come film a PSA video with the chief of police or the mayor or whoever wants to take part in the video. And we'll do that at no cost. You guys can use that for whatever PSA purposes you want. We also provide banners and flyers to hand out and banners put up at school zones like along the roadways. We have dedicated call center will be dedicated just to South Bay. So if somebody calls, has a question, you know, they'll, they'll answer with, you know, city of South Bay, how can we help you? And then they'll field questions. They can pay over the phone through that same number, but it'd be dedicated just to your, to your municipality. So again, with the public awareness, we send out, we have hard copies, emails, web-based materials that we send out to you guys for the PSAs. It's all in accordance with the 30-day plan. And this is, uh, again, just stuff to hand out at schools and notify the parents, other people that it's, it's there and it's working. So municipality's nearly identical from Georgia. They have a nearly identical state statute. We saw a 90% decrease in violations up there. And after one year, we started averaging 25% decreases in the violations. So the repeat offenders is less than 10% of the total violations. So it's, it's a good, good indicator. It slows people down. It puts that, that second thought in their head. When they see a school zone, I should slow down. Chance of me getting a ticket is probably pretty high. And it's, it's keeping the kids safe too, right? 90% reduction is huge when it comes to speeding, especially in a school zone when there's people's lives in danger. So again, it's just sort of the numbers, 96% reduction in Alpharetta, 98% in Gwinnett, 97 in Henry, and 97 in Roswell. All with about a 1, 1 to 2% appeal rate. So, you know, for every hundred tickets, you're getting maybe one that'll contest it. Nothing like the red light program. This program has a lot of support statewide with all of our clients. A lot of social media posts in their jurisdictions are praising the system and asking why it's not at every single school and why it didn't happen sooner, basically. And again, I'm not Greg Parks, I'm Luke Hyman. I can hardly leave some business cards for y'all if you need some. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lou. We do appreciate you for being here tonight and that presentation as well. I have some questions, but I want to hear from the other commissioners before I ask you a few questions.
Okay.
Commissioner King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for that, um, presentation. This, um, question, you said it's not going to cost the city or the schools any cost to install or would there be a fee, like a monthly fee or charge or something? So how do you guys get paid for this?
So our charges come out of paid violations. So out of the hundred dollar paid violation, there's, it says we get $21. So we'll take 21 of the $60 and then the rest of it is for the municipality. And that's our processing. That's, again, that, that covers everything. So there's no upfront fee to you all. There's no fees that you all actually have to pay out.
I mean, at all. I mean, even if there's no violations, there's no charge for the, um, the service at all, you're saying?
Right, yes. Correct. Yeah, and like I say, we only collect on violations that have been paid.
Okay.
So there's, once the money's there, that's when we are able to get paid.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner King. Commissioner Polk?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Luke, for the presentation.
Thank you.
So just, I guess, two questions. So, uh, does it only work as a school speed zone program? So does it only work during school hours or does it citation night?
So the state law dictates that it, the enforcement times begin 30 minutes before the beginning of school or the breakfast program, whichever is earlier. Some schools have breakfast programs, some don't. So whichever is the earlier time, enforcement runs throughout the school day and ends 30 minutes after the end of school. And then enforcement's done for the day and it starts back up again the next morning. It doesn't do any enforcement on nights, weekends, holidays, only during school times. And we, we program all that right into them when we set it up.
Thank you. And my second thought was, what about warnings? Do issue warnings?
30-day warning period during the public awareness campaign. It's a time that we issue warnings. Also, 30 days of warnings will go out prior to notice of violations being mailed out.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for, Mr. King. I met Commissioner Polk. Commissioner Berry?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berry. Vice Mayor?
Yes, um, you just answered the question that I had. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Lou, there's a question that I want to ask you. You said that this only enforced during the beginning of school to the end of the school time? Now, I could be wrong and I could be looking at things totally different. Now, I had went to different shops at different conferences and I spoke to vendors and refers to these for lights that flashing. And during the time when schools is on, school is in, early in the morning time, the lights flash. And then in the afternoon, when the kids are getting out, lights flash as well. Now during the daytime, these lights is not flashing.
Correct.
But those individuals speeding in that particular area, will they still receive a citation during that particular time period?
Yes, sir. So how it works is during the morning and afternoon flasher times, the speed, let's say the, the speed limit on the main road is 40 miles an hour. And during the flasher times, the speed the flasher times, the speed limit's fifteen. We'll enforce the fifteen mile an hour speed limit during the flasher times. When the flashes go off, we enforce the forty mile so violations would be issued at fifty one miles an hour during the non flasher times and twenty six miles an hour over during the flasher time. We enforce two different speed limits throughout the day.
I noticed you did, I guess you presented this tonight and to the city of South Bay, the first city that you presented this to in Palm Beach County, sir?
Me personally, yes. I'm usually work up in the northern part of the state.
The reason I asked that because due to the fact you did not say no city, you did not name a city in Palm Beach County. That's the reason I asked that particular question. With the law enforcement, you know, we have the Palm Beach County Sheriff Department. What role do they play in reference to this particular red light camera?
They won't have any role as long as you're, do you have a local police department?
We don't, we have the Palm Beach County Sheriff Department.
Okay. All right. So the PD, then their their role would be to review the violations.
Review the violation?
Review the violations and improve them.
The first question, I have a big problem with that. That's that's one of my biggest problems is it because due to the fact, we would definitely have to let our residents know that a speed camera out there. And then we have some of our peoples in the afternoon, they do have, you know, when the kids all in school, they have attendances, so speeding in that particular area. I know that one our commissioner have a business in that particular area. Then I I know she she see the individual speeding in that particular area and also some of our commissioners see those individuals speeding as well. I, my reservation about that there, we're going to have a lot of complainers within the city of South Bay. Hypothetically of this, if the commissioner approved this particular red speed zone, I, that's my reservation about it, Mr. Lewis. But I would like to get more and more information and reference this, sir, because I know that different companies, we go to the different vendors. Everyone's saying something totally different, totally different there.
And so the enforcement times are given by the state, right? They say when it can be enforced. We can tailor your enforcement times to what you want, right? If you only want flasher times, that's a possibility. We don't recommend that. We like it to sort of say the same throughout the state. So everybody sort of knows that they, you know, the school zone, the school zone, whether they're flashing or not, you got to be safe because there's still kids coming and going late, leaving early, things like that. But that would be completely up to to you all, how you wanted to handle that.
If an individual receives a ticket and that person want to appeal that ticket, you guys go to court on behalf of the city?
They will, they will send at the bottom of their violation, it has a spot where they can sign and request an administrative hearing. They'll send that to us and we'll schedule the hearing for them. You guys will have to have some sort of magistrate at place to hear them or Palm Bay, the county. There'll be, have to be some sort of magistrate to hear the cases.
Well, our attorney would not be involved, it's just the cities?
It would be up to her if she wanted to be involved, but it's usually a special magistrate that hears the case.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And and I'd also like to, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to just let you all know that this would be going out for procurement opportunity. And so while this vendor is here, this vendor may apply, but it may be other vendors who apply as well. So, you know, people may do things a little bit differently under the legal framework of the law. And so to give everybody the opportunity who may bid, if if it's the will of the commission for this to go out for bid, then you, you know, you just want to be careful to make sure that you're
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Turner. Appreciate that. That's me and I, you know, I want to hear from our attorney as well, Mr. Lou. But again, I want to thank you for being here tonight, sir, and thank you for your presentation, sir.
Thank you all.
All right.
Have a great night.
Mayor, you have now Representative from Genoptik.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Look, that's, that's, here we go. My name is Hassan DeBajah, and on behalf of Genoptik, we truly appreciate you and thank you guys for for giving us this opportunity to be here this evening. Genoptik, we're based here in Jupiter, Florida, right in your backyard. We have over two hundred and twelve employees. So the whole team members that are involved in the school zone speed programs, from the field engineers to the software developers, to the maintenance crew, to customer service, to the individuals that oversee and review the citations, they're all housed right here in Jupiter. And at some point, if your schedule permits, would love for you to have you guys there and host you over there, take a tour of the facility, get a first, you know, hand experience and validate and verify everything that we see in there. Just a little background about Genoptik. We've been around probably a little bit over eighty years. Genoptik was the first company that installed the speed and camera within the vehicle back in the early fifties. And since then, we've enhanced our solutions. We've gained more global experience and more national experience here in the States and became a global leader in photo enforcement, speed enforcement, but more importantly, in public and and civil security space. We pride ourselves on really making a difference in a community. I get it that we're a private company and we're into making money, that that's fair and square, that's fine. But more importantly, we we tend to focus on making a difference in the community. It's and that's utilizing the latest in the technology and so forth. And then the next, when it comes to Genoptik, it's like a one stop shop from our perspective. It kind of puts the city's mind at ease. We manufacture the hardware and we develop the software. So everything is done in house. We don't rely on third party vendors. Not that it's good or bad, that's not the point. But if there's an issue with the camera, where there's an issue with the with the radar or what have you, you know, we're not going to make excuses that I have to go waiting on a particular part. It's us. We manufacture everything in house. And if you have the opportunity to visit us in Jupiter, you'll see the hundred thousand square feet facility and everything is great. And the particular solution that we deploy for this school zone speed enforcement, that same system can also work for any additional application such as if the city has any noise problem, you know, with muffler issues, high sounds and particular vehicles in a particular area, that same camera can also detect that noise detection and so forth. Any other technology that the city might need and the technology can solve it, that same solution that we deploy can be utilized with that as well, too. When it comes to the school zone speed program, we will definitely provide a turnkey solution, a complete turnkey solution for the city, meaning the city team will not be responsible to manage anything that has to do that. That will be on us. So from doing the school zone speed study to deploying the solution, the technologies, installing the hardware, developing, deploying the software, doing the campaign for educating the community about the school zone speed program, when is it going to be deployed and have that warning period and so forth. We're also be responsible for training the city team members for as much as what you guys want to be involved in and as little as much as what you want to be involved in. You know, you, we definitely customize it to your to your needs. We also develop the the software whereby the potential violator can go online and pay or protest that particular ticket and then go from there. And if should any, any of those violators have to go to the court to protest that, we will definitely provide an expert witness, which most likely and most of the time will be a former law enforcement officer that will accompany the team member from your city to at the court hearing. And with the solution, we also provide the same camera can do the speed enforcement and at the same time can do the license plate reader detection, meaning just to keep the community safer in terms of if a stolen vehicle comes into town, that same camera that's monitoring speed, it's also, it's also alerting the Palm Beach County sheriffs that this is a stolen vehicle. And the alert will come into their mobile device within three seconds, the minute that vehicle enters town instantly. And I'll show you that in a second. And then also the experienced bilingual customer service and so forth. What's really more important, you know, when you look at other vendors and us included, you'll find similarities in terms of what we offer. What I strongly recommend for the for the team is concentrate on, you know, who can provide the better customer service, who can attend when they're, when when things go wrong. With technology, as you know, I mean, nothing is perfect. So just luck, as luck have it, Genoptik is based right here in Jupiter. We have the whole team is here. So we'll, I think from that perspective, definitely we'll do a much better job. And that's only fair to expect. Given our experience in in this field, you should come to expect the best out of us. Nothing should impress you. Nothing should surprise you. You should come to expect the best out of it. As far as the financial aspect of it, as my colleague mentioned earlier, pretty much is the same dollar amount. The only difference is of the sixty dollars, Genoptik is proposing that we only maintain thirty percent of that sixty dollars, meaning eighteen dollars. So for every paid ticket, Genoptik will only collect eighteen dollars out of the sixty. And the remaining forty two will stay for the for the city. We do have a signed contract, you know, here in the state of Florida with the city of Quincy, that has a clause that allows other cities to piggyback off of that contract and deploy the solution. I'm all for RFP and bidding process and procurement. I agree wholeheartedly with with any city that decides to do that, with one exception. If you guys have the opportunity to look at the vendors and utilizing your expertise and so forth and confirm that vendor X is the right candidate for this particular opportunity, then there's nothing wrong with bypassing that procurement process and then moving forward, you know, if 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 the legal aspect of it, you know, allows that. And for the most part, it does, but that's just my humble opinion. I say that with pride from our perspective, only because we've been there, we've done it, you know, from from an experience perspective. And when you guys visit us in Jupiter, you'll be able to see firsthand everything that I'm saying here. You can put your finger on it and confirm that it is, it is important. As far as the timeline for deploying the whole solution, approximately about ninety days, give or take, from the time we sign a contract to the time we do the site surveys, get things approved with FDOT, and then going live, approximately about ninety days. Should we need to speed that up with the city, by all means, we'll definitely can can make those adjustments. And then as far as the site plans, we do everything but in adherence to the FDOT. So this way, it doesn't put the city at any potential liability whatsoever. We take full responsibility of that and we adhere to whatever FDOT puts out there. The school zone speed study, this is a particular one that we've done for Palm Beach County about a year and a half ago, roughly. So we do a similar one for for the school here with in South Bay. And what I recommend is you do the school zone, sorry, the school zone speed study, for instance, hypothetically, before you even deploy anything, and you confirm that there's a need for it or not, for instance. And if you establish that there is, and you deploy the technology, I strongly recommend, you know, fast forward ninety days from after deploying the system, go ahead and do another speed study and see where you're at. Did the solution improve things? Did it enhance things? And if it did, then pull the system out. You know, the main goal is to change the driver's behavior, not to issue more tickets. So while we're in the business of making money, that shouldn't be the goal. The goal is if if you deploy it today and fast forward, things are improving down the road three months from now, pull the system out. You know, we should be calling you and saying, okay, you don't need us anymore. And we look forward to that day. And that's a good thing. As far as the hardware is concerned, this is what you can expect that we deploy. It's our latest in in photo enforcement technology. It's very simple. It's just those two things that you see up there that get mounted on any pole. The system on the far your far left or my far left is the radar, and then the one next to it is the camera. That's all that gets installed on a pole. So it's not overcrowded with equipment or any of that stuff. Single camera can monitor up to three lanes. I know we may not have three lanes here, but it's just an advantage. And it's bi directional. So if you if you happen to have a Canadian coming down this way where they have a front plate on their on their vehicle, the single camera can capture in both directions and what have you. And then it also have the license plate reader technology from the same camera. Nighttime capability is excellent, but there's no need for it, whether it's good or bad, because this is only going to be enforced during the school zone as we enforcement. And we will definitely customize a fully functional website for the citation, the payment of citation and so forth. And we'll work closely with the team. On the left hand side is what the consumer, sorry, the violator will log in and put in their citation number and take it from there. On the right hand side for the team members, they'll have access to that software to give them a full reporting capabilities and and so forth. Get an idea exactly what type of traffic you're getting today, what type of violations you're getting today and so forth. For the Palm Beach County Sheriff, this will be phenomenal. I did a presentation to them about, I want to say roughly, maybe a couple of months ago, roughly. And they were very impressed with our license plate reader capability from our perspective. One, not to pride ourselves or not to brag about it, but we're the pioneer in in that technology. We started that back in nineteen seventy nine. And having been there for that long, it should really work very, very well for law enforcement today. And it does. So what I mean by that is with the same camera that's doing the speed enforcement, it also will send the alert directly to my mobile device, to the Palm Beach County deputies' device, as soon as a vehicle of interest enters town and they are on a particular hot list, whether it's the National Crime Information Center hot list, or the Florida version of it, or the Palm Beach County. And that's very important because what that allows the deputies to take actions within seconds on a particular vehicle that's going fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty miles an hour and so forth. As far as processing the citation and so forth, everything is done in house there in Jupiter as well, too. So in in to make it easier on the Palm Beach County Sheriff, we don't send hypothetically, let's just say there's a hundred violations today. We don't send all these hundred violations to the Palm Beach County Sheriff for them to take time to review them and then decide which one is yes and which one is no. Our team of experts of former law enforcement who've been there and done that for a living, sorry, while they're in service, they're the ones that review that hundred potential violations. And out of those hundred, let's say, they, based on their experience, determine that out of those hundred, only ten are potential violations. And those are the ones that get uploaded and Palm Beach deputy will log in and then review those ten and decide whether yeah or no. As soon as they hit accept, then the citation gets generated and then we mail it out to with the potential violator. Like I said, the main goal is to change the driver's behavior. So we'll work closely with the with the city to develop as many different marketing campaigns that are needed to educate the community and to educate the the public on on the upcoming program and so forth, and do that throughout the whole tenure of of the program, not just at the beginning of it to let them know that this enforcement is going to be taking place. And I don't want to bore you with the rest of it, but pretty much if Palm Beach County, should the city approve this, then we'll work closely with Palm Beach Sheriff County. If collectively between Palm Beach Sheriff County and the city determine that there's a need to put additional license plate reader cameras to protect the community, the entrance and exits of the city, to monitor that and secure that, we will happily provide that at no additional cost to the city and just negotiate that eight, that thirty percent that we mentioned. And that's it for my end. And thank you for your time. We truly appreciate it. And happy to answer any questions if there's any remaining ones for me.
Thank you, Mr. Hussain. We do appreciate your presentation tonight, sir, and thank you for being here as well, sir. At this present time, any questions from this commissions for the presentation, Commissioner King?
No, sir. Thank you so much for your presentation.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner King. Commissioner Paul?
No questions. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Commissioner Paul, we appreciate it. Commissioner Barry?
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. Vice Mayor McKellum?
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone. Truly appreciate it. Please take me upon my request, if if your schedule permits, to visit us in Jupiter, please. Thanks so much. Have a great evening and God bless you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Commission, before staff develop devote any time to the procurement of this effort, is this something the commission is desiring staff to move forward from a procurement perspective?
Mr. Manager, you know, I have been, in the past, I've been talking to you and I talked to the Palm Beach County Sheriff, especially Sergeant O'Thee and the other, and his deputies reference of the individual speeding within the school zone. And I'm very concerned about that because due to the fact it never stopped or continued. In the past, I haven't given them warnings. In the past, I haven't given them warnings. Warnings after one and it seemed like it slowed, they slowed down for a little while. And then when the deputy's not around, they start speeding again. I go back to the Palm Beach County Sheriff Department, they put the deputies out there. The deputy does a wonderful job in reference to our school zone. But by the same token, we definitely have to do something in the near future in reference to the speeding in the area there because some are babies. And if you come out early in the morning time, you see some little small shorties, medium-sized shorties and other shorties, you know? And you really can't see some of those young babies that walking down the streets there. And when the individual speeding in that particular area, they can lose control. Not only hurt one of those babies, it hurts some of those parents that walk with their babies as well. And I just want to thank the Palm Beach County Sheriff Department for being on top of it. And every time they have the opportunity to be out there, they out there in the morning time. And I think that Commissioner, I think that we really need to take a hard look at this here and see which direction we want to go because we don't want none of our babies hurt. And I see Mr. Hightower and I see Vice Mayor, he's out there in the afternoon with those babies as well. They come from Rosenwall Elementary School on the cot that they have all the way to the village there, watching those baby, making sure those baby don't step out in the road. But I have been, I have been in the morning time myself, just stop there and see how these speeders early in the morning time. And some of those that speeding, they're taking their kids to school in a speed zone, in the school zone. And it doesn't make any sense, no sense at all. Because they're not concerned about their babies, but we are concerned about their babies. And I had had in the past, someone came to me and they told me, said, well, Mayor Kyle, the deputy said that you said zero tolerant. I say, yes, zero tolerant in a speed zone. Because they have given you a chance, they have given you the opportunity to slow it down. Watch out for those baby, watch out for the production in the school zone. And some of them just neglected completely. But I said to this commissioner here, think about it and see which directions you want to go. But that's in my spiel in reference to the whole thing and references to putting some type of cameras in there to make sure that we protect our teachers, to our residents and especially our babies that's going to school each and every morning, coming home in the afternoon. Thank you.
In addition, a question at this present time from the commissioner in reference to these items have been presented before us tonight.
Well, Mr. Mayor, my take is I did all what you say. I'm all for sending it out for procurement. I support that, that we move forward with bringing the cameras to the city of South Bay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Same here too, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner King.
You know.
Thank you, Commissioner Polk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berry.
Yes, sir, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, everyone, your presenter for being here tonight. And I love your presentation of both. I really do. So primary, whatever cure may come back and these commissioners, they move forward. I'm not saying which direction they will go, but we ought to pray that we'll be able to move forward with the cameras in the school zone. Because I'm very serious about it. And that Vice Mayor from the city of Belgrade, he always tell Ms. Jacob, those Joe babies, they are my babies in the city of South. They belong to someone else, but they're my babies in the city of South Bay. And I'm very concerned about it when I see one of those babies that walk out in the road, then all of a sudden someone hit them because they're speeding. And especially when you have a parent that's standing next to you, that you are standing on that corner there. And they look at you and say, Mr. Mayor, you guys gonna allow them to speed? I looked at her and told her, we'll take care of that. I called Sergeant O'Tee, he right on top of it. But we're gonna continue to push, continue to push until we get those cameras there. And we will educate our residents within the city of South Bay. Don't speed in the school zone, look out for our babies, take care of our babies and everything will be all right. Again, thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you as well, Commissioner. Thank you, Madam Attorney and thank you, City Manager Campbell. We'll continue with our agenda for tonight. Opportunity for the public to address the Commissioner, Mr. Collins.
Ms. Annie Eifel.
Ms. Annie.
Healthier Glades.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Commission. Annie Eifel with Healthier Glades. I'm here just to provide you some community announcements that are coming up this week and next month after the holidays. The first one I want to talk about is the Healthy Holidays Empower Healthcare located in Pahokee, Florida is hosting a health fair at four ninety-one East Main Street. And this is an opportunity for folks to get free screenings right before the holidays. I do have some extra flyers, so I can leave some in the back. The other thing I want to talk about is Healthier Glades and Community Partners of South Florida, who happens to be our fiscal agent, we're in the process of hosting a housing fair. And as you know, in the last couple of years, we've seen an increase in housing behind Winn-Dixie in Belgrade. You see the townhouses that are being built in Pahokee where the old hospital used to be. So right now, we're seeing that there may be an opportunity to start doing some education and awareness for folks who may be interested in purchasing a home in the Glades. So on January twenty-fifth, we will be partnering with Community Partners of South Florida, my fiscal agent, West Tech is where the event will be hosted. We're looking for contractors, realtors, anybody who's interested in setting up a vendor table so that you share information. We're going to be doing workshops on pre-purchase, post-purchase, legacy building with addressing issues around heirs property. As you know, if you think about the sub in Belgrade, you think about the community where the, you know, where the fair was this past weekend, that community in South Bay in the back. Also, you have other community, citizen, village in Pahokee. You have a lot of folks that have purchased homes and grew up in those homes. And the kids leave, but they don't always come back. And so sometimes those homes are just there, but there's an opportunity to keep it in the family. So one of the things we're realizing that we need to do some education awareness on how to let our community know about keeping homes in families, how to build wealth through homeownership. So there's going to be an opportunity to provide workshops for that as well. So I do have, I gave the commissioner save the date. I thought I had some extra ones, but I'll leave this one in the back. Well, I'll come back again to share more information and bring more flyers. But I just wanted to let you know that we are doing this. And this is a great opportunity for the community as well as the cities to partake in this. And this is a collaborative effort with representatives from all three communities that are working on this work group with myself and Community Partners of South Florida of trying to bring this housing fair to the Glades. They've done it, Community Partners has done it in West Palm Beach, in Riviera Beach. And I've been pushing them to say, hey, we need this out here. So they finally are working with me to bring it out here. So I just wanted to just share that with you guys. And with that, that's my updates.
Thank you, Ms. Annie Eifel. We appreciate all the information that you bring to the city and the work that you are doing as well with the Healthier Glades. You're always involved in different things that take place, not only in the city of Pahokee, Belgrade, not South Bay.
And like I said, if there's anything I can do to support within my power to support efforts in South Bay, you know I will.
Yes, ma'am, and we do appreciate it.
All right. So thank you. And I will be at the MLK, they've already talked to me, Commissioner Berry.
Thank you, Ms. Eifel. We do appreciate it.
That's it.
At this present time, I have Ms. Ransome here along with her instructor, Ms. Jacob, along with the kids from the pre-law program and the parents of these young peoples. Tonight, before Ms. Ransome read to you tonight, to let you know exactly the things that they do at that particular school, the program that she's in tonight, with the students, with the teacher and the parents, the relatives of these kids, will you please stand?
Good evening. My name is Kyra Ransome. I am a seventh grade pre-law student from Lakeshore Middle School to Honorable Mayor Joe Kyle's, who affectionately call Papa Joe, Vice Mayor McKelvin, the Commissioners Barry Polk, King and Attorney Woods. Last but not least, much respect to City Manager, Mr. Leandre Camel. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for all you do. To the city attorney, Ms. Weeks, what can we say? Thank you is not enough. We thank you so much for your support too. The saying says, children are our future, we are the children of today. It is my distinct honor and privilege to sit among you tonight and to witness this memorable occasion. On behalf of the Lakeshore Middle School pre-law students, our instructor and coordinator, Dr. William M. Jacobs, we greet you. A special thanks to Mayor Kyle's and you commissioners for providing us the opportunity to see how local and city government works by sitting among you tonight. Thank you also, Mayor Kyle's, for serving as one of our mentors and strong supporters too. To Honorable Mayor Joe Kyle's, who affectionately call Papa Joe, Vice Mayor McKelvin, the Commissioners Barry Polk, King and Mr. Camel, I would like to take a point of personal privilege at this time, if I may. At this time, I would like for everyone sitting with me to relinquish your seats at this time to go to the floor for a special presentation. I would that all of the students from Lakeshore Middle School to stand at this time. We had our presentation last minute and we're still working on it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ransome. Let's give Ms. Ransome a, I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. Jacob. We appreciate that. Let's give her a round of applause. These are the young people that we are trying to produce, that have been producing the Glades area here. A lot of times they say about the Glades area, nothing good come out the Glades. But we look at each and every one of you all that sits here, the ones that live in the Glades area and the ones that have was in the Glades area and moved in other places there. But these babies, as Vice Mayor Amazon and myself, we go out to that school to be with these babies, these young peoples in the pre-law program. And it means a great deal to the both of us. We don't have kids that go to that school. We do not have kids that go to that school. But the love and the affection that those young people shows towards us, it makes us want to do more and more for those young babies at that particular school. And I said to each and every one of you all, and I'm saying it again, I keep saying this over and over, take the time out, talk to our babies, encourage them. Because they're under a lot of pressure, a lot of pressure our young peoples. And a lot of peoples don't know it because they don't have trust in some peoples and they're afraid to go and talk to them. Sometimes they even afraid to go and talk to their parents about different things. But I can say the one thing about Ms. Jacob, as Vice Mayor and I have been at that school, that these kids can come and talk to her about anything. And when they leave, they are very happy about it. They have gotten their point across. And I just want to say to Ms. Jacob, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of those babies at that particular school. Jacob, thank you for allowing us to go on the trips with you and those babies. And we've gone to college, at your Florida Memorial College, we have gone with you with those babies. At Attorney's Office in West Palm Beach in Miami, thank you for allowing us to be a part of those babies' life. Because the only thing those babies are looking for is love, love. And love go a mighty long ways. You can say, but love is an action word. And these are the things that we try to show to those young kids when she invite us to come out to those schools. And I said to each and every one of you all, take the time out to just listen at them. Take the time out to talk to them. And you'll see a big difference in our babies, especially those young kids in the pre-law program. So new year coming, twenty twenty-five. And I said to each and every one of you all, take the time out, nurture one of those kids. Be on their side, show them I'm here for you, I'm not against you because I love you. Thank you. Ms. Ransome again, thank you. Ms. Jacob, thank you.
We'll continue with our agenda tonight. Concern of agenda, may I have a motion in a second to move the concerned agenda to the floor for discussion and approval?
So move.
Move by Vice Mayor McKelvin, second by Commissioner Berry. In this discussion at this present time, here are none, Mr. Collins, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Berry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Yes.
Mayor Kyle.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Thank you, Commissioner, passed by all commissioners. Resolution fifty dash twenty twenty-four. Mr. Collins, read for the record, please.
Resolution number fifty dash twenty twenty-four. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, supporting the procurement and oversight of consultants for the development of a countywide transportation plan, supporting the formation of a technical advisory committee for the same and provided for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. May I have a motion in a second to move resolution fifty dash twenty twenty-four? Moved by Commissioner Berry?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor McKelvin. Any questions for this resolution before this commission? Here are none, Mr. Collins, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Berry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Yes.
Mayor Kyle.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Thank you, Commissioner, passed by all commissioners. Resolution five fifty-one twenty twenty-four. Mr. Collins, read for the record, please.
Resolution fifty-one twenty twenty-four. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, ratifying the city manager's submission of the United States Environmental Protection Agency Environmental and Climate Justice Community Change Grants Program Application for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, provided for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. May I have a motion in a second to move resolution fifty-one twenty twenty-four to the floor for discussion and approval?
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Polk.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor McKelvin. Any questions before this commission per resolution fifty-one twenty twenty-four? Here are none, Mr. Collins, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Berry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Yes.
Mayor Kyle.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Thank you, Commissioner, passed by all commissioners. Rosenwall Elementary School report.
Well, I don't see Principal Hightower. He said he was gonna be here, so I guess he'll be at the next commission to me. But we do have our K through two assessments this Wednesday, or tomorrow and Thursday. Next week, we have our third through fifth grade assessment on next Tuesday and next Wednesday. Winter holidays, Christmas holiday is December twenty-first through January the fifth. We're having our holiday program, we can't say Christmas, but we're having our holiday program on December the eighteenth. So I'm inviting each and every commissioner, mayor, city staff to come out. I will let you guys know what time the program will be at a later date. That'll be our Rosenwall Elementary School report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McKelvin. Do appreciate that wonderful report, sir. Financial report, at the workshop, Commissioner Berry should say that she want to table this council report tonight. I have a motion in a second to table.
Moved.
Second.
It was moved by Commissioner Polk, seconded by Vice Mayor McKelvin. Any questions for the financial report to be tabled? Here are none, Mr. Collins, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Berry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
Yes.
Mayor Kyle.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Collins, it passes. First report.
Yes. We have the annual toy giveaway December seventh, which is this Saturday from nine AM to twelve PM. Tri-city barbecue December thirteenth at Pahokee Marina at eleven AM. Palm Beach County Day, March fourth through the sixth, twenty twenty-five. NLC Congressional City Conference, March eighth through the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. On the Tri-city Barbecue, December the thirteenth at Pahokee Marina, is it about to bring an unwrapped toy?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Unwrapped, unwrapped toy. Yes, sir. Thank you. The manager report.
Mr. Manager? I mean, not Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
With the annual toy giveaway, are there flyers or is it the families have already been notified?
Families have been notified about it, but there also will be flyers going out, reminders about the toy giveaway on December seventh.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, City Manager Campbell. City Manager report?
Before you move on, thank you.
Commissioner Berry?
And Commissioners, please add to that the Martin Luther King Arturo for Contest at Rosenwall, January the fifteenth. Time to be announced. Or do I have, what time is it, six or seven?
Six.
Six, January the fifteenth, Rosenwall Elementary School Cafeteria. Six, January the fifteenth, Rosenwall Elementary School Cafeteria at six PM. The judges will remain the same and we are just, and the announcements have been sent to the schools asking for participants. So make sure we include that.
And can we also make sure that we stick to the deadline?
Okay. We will, we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. Appreciate it. City Managers?
In addition to that date of your next commission meeting, uh, is January seventh, twenty twenty-five. After tonight, you will reconvene on January seventh, twenty twenty-five.
You know I have to say something on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Justification, there, we have one meeting in December.
You have one meeting and the following meeting was, uh, this meet, that meeting was canceled by resolution. It's, it was closer to the holiday and you may have some Commissioners traveling. So it's part of the annual, uh, resolution where that date, that meeting has been canceled. And our next meeting, uh, is scheduled for January seventh.
You know, you can, uh, fight the battle and lose the war, so I'm just gonna let that roll over to next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry.
The, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a few items here. Uh, as part of your legislative priorities update, during our prior meeting, we had a conversation regarding those priorities. And it would boil down to Southwest Eleventh Avenue roadway sidewalks and street lighting. Um, estimated cost, uh, according to the engineering report is one point eight million. That is part of our legis, that will be a part of our, um, twenty twenty-five legislative priorities. The South Bay Commerce Park Development Epicenter, cost of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. This would, uh, assist in improvement and or development of the parcel known as the South Bay Park of Commerce. As well as the Resiliency Hub Community Center for a cost of two point three million dollars. Those are the three items that the commission discussed. And I know in January, this item will be coming back to the commission as part of a resolution where you have fully adopt your legislative priorities prior to, uh, March. Uh, but definitely prior to any committee meetings that will take place, but also prior to the session beginning in March. So those are the three items that, um, that are part of the legislative priority, state legislative priorities update. Now, the question, um, did come about to prioritizing those items. So as we, as you begin thinking about it, but when the resolution is presented to you, please just, uh, just take some time if you don't talk with the manager prior to. Probably, we want to prioritize those items, what is number one, two, and three. Um, so when we, when the conversations are taking place, the manager would speak in, in that tone that's outlined by the commission. So you have the community center at two point three million. The Commerce Park Development Epicenter at eight hundred seventy-five thousand and Southwest Eleventh Avenue for one point eight million. This is some, this language and those items, um, came from some previously funded and what the governor did not veto, um, from other communities. But it also based upon where the governor, um, thoughts are at this present moment in the direction that he could possibly go during this legislative session. So those are the items that's being presented from the commission, um, conversations in the last meeting.
Question, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. We're in the process now of drafting the language to be included or presented in the appropriation request. Is that the place where we are now?
That is the place where we are. I'll be able to schedule that time. I know you want to participate in that, um, drafting, Commissioner. The, and it was a direction of this commission to, um, have you participate in that. We are still waiting on the forms. Um, the forms have not been published and distributed for us to appropriation forms have not been published and distributed.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. The MLK event support, uh, as you are aware, in twenty, in last year, Commissioner, one of the Commissioners and this commission as a whole, uh, participated in a, um, large expanding our MLK events here in the City of South Bay. You did that with the support of fifteen hundred dollars. This year, the, uh, the community is, the community and Commissioner McKel, Vice Mayor McKelvin, I do apologize, sir. It's already begun the work and the planning for a, uh, spectacular MLK event to be held in the City of South Bay. So the funding that I just, what I feel has been set aside and I need to just locate it and make sure that the line item is there, is the amount of three thousand dollars to support that event to take place in the City of South Bay. As I shared with the commission, it is within the manager's, uh, purchasing authority, so it would not be a full three thousand dollars to one thing. It just may be multiple items not to exceed the three thousand dollars to support the MLK event. So I just wanted you to know in advance, because our next time meeting will be January seventh. We, you may, the activity and the planning is taking place. Cause last time when it was presented to the commission, it was a, um, emerging item. And I wanted to give the commission an advance notice of those, uh, activities that would be possibly taking place in the City of South Bay for our MLK event.
Uh, Mr. Manager.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, last year it was called, thank you, Unity.
In the community.
Unity in the community.
Yes, ma'am.
And it was at Town Hall.
That was year before last.
That was year, okay.
Last year was at Copper Park.
Oh, right.
This is the third year.
Yeah, just give us a little update on what the anticipation is, if you may, please.
Well, you know, we're gonna have, uh, it's gonna be for the community. We'll have, um, different vendors and we'll have uh, different performers, performers come out and perform for the community. Uh, you know, just bringing the community together for a great day to honor, you know, a great man, MLK. You know, and to have something positive for our community and our residents. Um, give the kids a, a nice time to come out. Um, you know, right now we're just searching for a date. Um, because I know we have the City of Belle Lake, they normally have theirs, um, on a certain day. And I know City of Pahokee have theirs on a certain day. Um, so we don't want to intertwine with, you know, what other cities are doing because we want all the cities to participate. Um, so, you know, we, we're still in the planning phase at this moment. But we want to make it a great event for our citizens and our residents.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and the last item is I share with you all, the opportunity that is, uh, that was presented, an unsolicited proposal regarding the South Bay Park of Commerce for a, uh, four point two acres of land to be developed here in this city. And I will further that conversation in order to present something to this commission and see where you all are with the, uh, how that proposal could move us and propel the community forward. So that's all from the manager's desk. I also would like to share, uh, Northwest Sixth. Yes, thank you. Northwest Sixth Avenue, um, if you get that, Commissioner Polk. Uh, Northwest Sixth Avenue, um, Sabbath, thank you. Uh, was repaid. Um, there was some reconstruction work done on that street. And we're moving along the way. There are some other streets that's gonna come about that we will get taken care of in the community. This commission did set aside some support, um, some financial resources for those things to take place. And we are moving them forward, uh, at this time. So we are trying to get some of these streets taken care of with what the commission has set aside. That's all that I have from the manager's desk.
Mr. Manager, Northwest Seven, have they completed that screen? And repaid?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Northwest Seven or Sixth?
Seven.
While we're talking about, uh, road improvement street, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. When we met with the Florida Department of Transportation Representative, someone indicated there are funds available through the department and we can bundle streets. Are we pursuing that as a funding option? I, I didn't get all of the information. Uh, Mr. Manager, will you, uh, give us an update on that, please?
Yes, ma'am, um. The bundling of streets through a, through one of the grants as outlined through the Florida Department of Transportation are LAP project. The City of South Bay, in, in those conversations held with Mr. Martinez, they were, those fund, the fundings do exist. The funding opportunities do exist. However, we are a, uh, rural area of economic concern community and the LAP project, we do not qualify for LAP funding. That is part of the conversation I would share with the commission regarding language change and the policy. It is so that we could become eligible. We have to work on the policy language that would make the community eligible, including some of our, our population. So it is working on that language to make, uh, to allow the City of South Bay eligible for several of those grant funds or those funding opportunities through DOT.
Now, generally, what amount, uh, what is the amount that is generally allocated or distributed within those larger areas?
Some of them, just off of memory, so do not quote me on this. I do know that they're over five million dollars for some of those projects. And there are some that are as low as two million for road projects. Some, they get higher, but I don't want to, without having that information in front of me, speak, um, incorrectly.
Now, the bundling process involves several streets with the same characteristics or the same dire needs, or is the bundling just prioritizing those areas that need immediate attention? What does that look like?
What I will feel more comfortable doing, uh, Commissioner Barry and to, and for the general public is having that scope with me.
Okay.
And so I can speak factually and honestly.
Okay.
So that i- it, there's nothing that comes back to say, this is what I said.
Okay.
And it is, it is not a part of the scope. So with understanding the question that's being posed, I would like to pull the scope from DOT and present that information at a later date.
Do you think we could put that on our future agenda item for?
Sure can. I will put that as part of the manager's report for January seventh.
Excellent. Thank you. And the other piece has to do with this map that I take with me. Now, uh, this is the latest proposed zoning map that I have. Do I need an updated map? And that, uh, at the last meeting, special meeting, Polk, Commissioner Polk, asked me about the Park of Commerce. And I referred to this grade area. Is there something that I need to update on my, um, my map? You want to take a look at it?
I think so. This say two thousand and seven?
That's what I'm asking.
There, your zoning map, your zoning map, uh,
That's what I meant, okay.
Although you may have that zoning map as a two thousand and seven, as development occur and zoning changes are done and a developer has interest, um, and we are able to zone it in accordance to, uh, Florida statute and Rule nine J five, we would do those zonings and outline it at the top. So you have heard, you, you've read several ordinances where we did some zoning updates.
Yes, yes, yes.
And those are done as part of your comprehensive planning process.
That's correct.
So that now, your zoning map as it stands in front of you, yes, that map is still current.
It's current. It is dated two thousand and seven.
Although it's dated two thousand and seven.
All right, so I am in reference and in order, when I refer to this map in a conversation outside of the City of South Bay, is that correct?
You are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry.
My committee meetings, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, City Manager Kamala. That concludes your report.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you for that data as well, sir. City Attorney's Report?
Yes, um, Mr. Mayor, my feel-good report tonight is making sure that you all are aware that, um, the Palm Beach School Board Pre-Law Academy Coordinator and Instructor, uh, Dr. Wilhelmina Jacobs will be celebrating a birthday. And so, and, um, and, and I thought that was special enough. And she is a permanent fixture in our chambers to, um, make sure that you all knew her birthday is coming up.
Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. We do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Before I move on with the, uh, I know that she just gave the future agenda item that Mr. City Manager is gonna put on his report. Uh, at this present time, I want to thank Ms. Bryant from Senator Vermont Office for being at our meetings and looking forward to meet with her in January. I don't know what City Manager said, scheduled a meeting before then, but I want to thank you for being here tonight. And hopefully we'll get a chance to, uh, meet our new representatives as well, uh, in the near future. I don't know if the manager have set a meeting up, but I think he have to meet with her pretty soon as well in Tallahassee. Also, the Palm Beach County Shout Department, Lieutenant and Sergeant, you have anything that you want to say tonight?
As Lieutenant and Sergeant are making their way forward, I do, I would like to add that Northwest Tenth Avenue Road and Water Main, um, project is on the street. There are one, two, three bidders did show up to the pre-bid meeting. It was held on November twentieth and it is scheduled to close, I think, early January for the Northwest Tenth Avenue Reconstruction Project from MLK to Terminus to the end of the roadway for, um, from MLK to Northwest Second Street. So that project is moving forward at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
And before you move on, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we, the Audit Selection Committee needs to schedule a date because we need to select an independent auditor for the City of South Bay. We, at the next meeting, we will have an update on the process because we have not met. The follow-up, we did not receive any proposals. I hope I'm not speaking out of turn. But I've had several requests, when will the committee meet again? With that said, we can put that on our future agenda.
We are trying to find a time to, we are trying to schedule a time where we can have a forum. Several dates have been announced, uh, you know, also, uh, we just couldn't meet a forum. So we are proposing a Audit Selection Committee meeting, um, sometime next week, possibly on Tuesday. There was just need to confirm in advance to get the proper notification out, uh, public notification out with all of the, um, committee members. And some are, some are still traveling and haven't they got the response.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Commissioner Barry.
Thank you so much. Hi.
Great to see y'all. Um, I'd just like to present a certificate of appreciation to the City of South Bay. Uh, this was given to me about a month and a half ago. It's just been crazy schedule, so I've been trying to get here to give it to the city. Um, the certificate is given for the outstanding dedication and services rendered in the tri-city communities. And this certificate is being given to the City of South Bay for always, uh, having law enforcement's back and providing us great service here. And he's assisting myself, Sergeant Ortiz, and the rest of the team is the always what we need. And it's be, it was given to me by the Social Justice Ministry of the Greater South District Baptist Association International Incorporated, uh, based out of Belle Lake. I was giving to me by Pastor Lionel Camel. I believe you're familiar with. Just, I was just thinking.
I know, have an idea.
And Reverend Willie Lawrence, he's the Social Justice Chairman.
Yes, sir.
But I just wanted to, uh, hand this to you guys.
Excellent.
Commissioner, come down with him, please.
Thank you. Come on.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
We're all in fourth. I'm in fourth.
Oh, oh, oh.
That's all right, we're good, all is well. Thank you, let's see, has it run, okay. Thank you, excellent. Thank you, thank you. Oh, we got it, thank you. I'll be standing up soon, water, yeah. Thank you so much, excellent.
You don't have to go back.
You don't have to.
Come. Chief? You have anything that you want to say tonight?
Good evening, I don't want to steal his thunder. So he did so good, no, I just want to say happy holidays. In January, I will have some information for you guys about our new piece of equipment. I'm very excited about it. It's right now in Fort Myers, but I don't want to divulge too much information because I'm still working on some details. But it's definitely gonna affect the Glaze in a very good, positive way. So I'm excited about it. And I hope everybody have a safe holiday, and I'd love to see you guys in January.
Thank you.
But probably lose a couple pounds.
Same to you, safe holidays. Commissioner, commit for the good of order, Commissioner King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight and hope that everybody had a happy, happy Thanksgiving. And I want to wish everyone a merry, merry Christmas. Hope that you have an enjoyable Christmas and a happy, safe New Years. And God's willing, I'll see you guys next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner King, Commissioner Pope.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, I say thank you to everyone, Vice Mayor, God bless you. Ms. Jacobs, happy birthday to you. Hopeful to see you before your birthday. And to all the residents, say to you, thank you so much for being a part of what we do here. Our local government is very important. We touch the lives of people every day, you know. A lot of people focus on the presidential status, but we have a direct impact. Like, we were down on Seventh Street today. I seen some of the residents here tonight, so, you know, with those road repairs. So we're grateful for the work that we're doing. I just want to take a point of personal privilege and say thank you to Ms. Ranson over there. What a wonderful job. So, so, so my point of personal privilege is that she's one of the youth miracle by faith. Why I get the privilege of pastoring. And, and shout out to her grandma who's here, who's also one of our parishioners. You know, and I'm so proud of you tonight. Very, very proud of you. And so thank you for the work that you're doing. To all of you tonight, have a wonderful night. The Lord continue to bless and keep you. Happy to see you, Madam Attorney, good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Pope, Commissioner Barry.
Thank you so much for your presence and be safe.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McKellen?
Yes, thank you all for coming out and participating in your local, your local government. I want to wish everyone a happy and a merry Christmas. Make sure you're safe, make sure your kids, your family. Tell them that you love them because, you know, we have a lot going on in our streets at this time. So continue to pray for each and everyone, all of the residents. Just make sure you have a safe holidays and a happy New Year. May God continue to bless each and every one.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I did owe it everything that the Commissioner has said tonight to the Palm Beach County Shaft Department, to the Palm Beach County Fire Department. Thank you. Thank you for everything that you have there for the year twenty twenty-four. And thank you for being within, not only in the city of South Bay, but the Glaze as a whole. You have protected our residents in the city of South Bay, Belgrade and Pahokee and the surrounding area. Whatever medical they needed, you was always there at their disposal. And I just want to say thank you. And thank you all for being with those families, or those three deputies. The City Manager, along with Vice Mayor McKellen, and along with Commissioner Reese. We was at that funeral today. It was a sad funeral. But you all stood tall, each and every one of you all, Palm Beach County Shaft Department, the Fire Department, and others from other areas that was there to support that family and show them that you loved them. That was a brotherhood and a sisterhood at that particular funeral today. I take my hats off to each and every one of you all. And I said to you in the past, and I'm saying to you today, you never knows when you leave from your home in the morning time. They're gonna go for each one of us that's sitting up in, sitting up in here tonight. You don't really gonna be able to see your family in the afternoon. Because all three deputies, there was an assumption the same where we will be. We leave our home in the morning time, thinking that we're gonna make it back home at night. It did not happen with all three officers. But you guys showed support for those families. From the day this accident happened up until the day of the funeral, you all was there, all the agents was there. Florida Highway Patrol was there. Our newly elected president, he was there today, along with our governor. They was at the funeral today. And that's why I said we have to continue to stay united. We do, we have to do that. Because they never know when our time might come. We, as Commissioners, sit on this dais. We don't know what might happen to us. As our attorneys, you travel the dangerous highways to make sure you keep us intact and make sure we do the right thing to serve the residents in the city of South Bay. And I said to each and every one of you all tonight, thank you. Thank you for being a part of the city of South Bay. I know we're not gonna have another meeting in the year twenty twenty-four, but I just want to say thank you, I appreciate each, every one of you all. Because it's not about the, the five of us, along with our City Manager, our staff that sits on this dais. It's about each and every one of the residents in the city of South Bay. We come together as a team, we work as a team. Regardless of what our position, what our static are, we are a team within the city of South Bay. We cannot do nothing without your support. Yes, we get kicked around, we get ran over, but by the same toll, we still ticking. Because due to the fact that we are to serve you all, not ourselves. But I want to say that to each and every one of you all. May God continue to bless you and your family. May God continue to cover you for the upcoming New Year. Our guests here tonight, thank you for traveling the dangerous highways. We see you at different conferences, we have a conversation. And may God continue to bless you and your family as well. But most of all, let's bless that family who lost a mother, who lost a father, who lost a husband, who lost a nephew, grandchildren. Let's bless those individual families who lost their loved ones in that terrible accident. And on behalf of this Commission within the city of South Bay, I appreciate you. I cares about you. We are here for you and we love you. And may God take care of you for this upcoming year of twenty twenty-five. I entertain my motion to adjourn.
The move.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.